Please stand and pray with me. I'll start us off with an invocation. Dear Lord, just thank you for the many blessings you've given us. We just praise you and give you all the glory. Most importantly though, just love those children that are in your arms today from Nashville. Let them know that you love them and let the parents know that you love them. And just be with them in this time of grief and just let them know that you're there and you love them. That's all I can say. Everything we do and say, we give you all the praise and glory. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, call meeting to order. So first up, we got our special presentation. Eagle Scout Dan Mitchell from Troop 144 in Mint Hill. So I'll let him come up and tell us a little bit about his project.
So, good evening. I'm Daniel Mitchell. I'm the current acting senior patrol leader for my troop in Mint Hill. That's Troop 144. I'm currently applying for my Eagle Scout. I'm working on the project, which is going to be, I'm building a kiosk at Privet Park just down the road.
I'll help you out with your powerpoint.
We got some pictures?
Yeah, he's got a whole little presentation he threw together, so.
There you go.
Yeah, and I just want to say a quick thank you to Dan for choosing Stallings too. You guys might remember his brother Jacob. So we're keeping it in the family and they're bringing all their Eagle Scout projects here. So I can't complain about that. So I just want to say a quick thank you before you go on. Thank you, Council.
Yeah, my older brother was here a couple of months ago. So we're going to be building a little kiosk. It's going to be about seven or so feet tall, some three foot by two, a large display board. And all the materials for this kiosk will be donated by my troop. And there's a little image of what it's supposed to look like when it's done. So my project is, I got an email today saying it was getting approved. So I should be able to start all the process of getting it fulfilled around this time next week. I I need to select a date for when it's going to get approved by the town council so I can really start building it and have a full day planned out. I need to also find where it's going to be placed. I have to believe send an email to someone and something for electrical lines, plumbing, so we can know exactly where to place it where it won't damage anything. I just need to organize the full workday, make sure everything goes smoothly and get it all done. Thank you so much for supporting my Eagle project and allowing me to work for small day and for the park.
Well, Daniel, we certainly appreciate the work. Did the committee give you a hard time on your first presentation?
No.
No, they didn't give you a hard time? That's all, I thought they enjoyed doing that, but congratulations. You want to get a picture?
Oh, yes, please.
I got dressed up.
Yes, you did.
Let's get over here.
I noticed we got on our jacket.
I was gonna say something.
Put my jacket on.
Yeah.
We noticed, it looks good.
Oh, yeah, plus.
This way. Good job. Thank you for having us.
Alright, next up is our public comments. And I don't see anybody from the public here other than the Mitchells, so we'll pass that. Alright, we got a consent agenda for amended budget ordinance 14 and then amended budget ordinance 15 for the Park and Rec Sponsorship Fund. Anybody have any questions on those? Are we fully understood?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to point out on the agenda, consent agenda item 1B, the amended budget ordinance 15. The requested action is to amend the fiscal year 22, 23 budget ordinance. Should have a copy of that, just wanted to clarify.
Yep, everybody see the copy of that? We just made a change in the fiscal year. So appreciate that, Alex. Alright, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Alright, motion by Mr. Hall.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Groome's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, alright. Next up is our agenda approval. Does anybody have any additions or deletions or? David, did you want to do something on the?
Yep.
House bill.
I would like to add a section for Alex to discuss or lead a discussion on our Senate Bill 317. Bill to address workforce housing crisis is the title of it. But it needs some discussion, I think, and I'd like Alex is prepared to discuss that.
Okay. Let's make that 4A.
Move approval of the agenda as proposed with the following exception. We're going to add discussion of Senate Bill 317 as item 4A.
Alrighty, motion, ma'am.
Second.
Right, second by Stephen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, alrighty. Next up is Police Department Crime Report. Are you doing it, David, or is the chief?
Uh, no, the chief is doing it. I had requested it to be added.
Oh, I thought maybe you were on tonight.
No, I'm not. I'm not qualified for that, but I am interested in seeing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just a small snapshot of our monthly report that we submit and it's on the Police Department website. This report that goes on the monthly, or it goes on the website every month, just kind of shows kind of a large view of some of the things that occur in the town of Stallings. And it shows the month before and the percent increase or decrease from the previous year. So as you can see, for '23, we've got January of '22 and '23 and February of '22 and '23. So the report gets submitted a month. So the February report was submitted in March. So you can see some of the metrics that we look at, just total calls, a number of reports, number of arrests, drug investigations, cases assigned to detectives, traffic stops, citations, warnings, DDBIs, traffic crashes, crime scene callouts, K-9 uses, use of force incidents, preventive patrols, business checks, alarm calls, community service events. And when the hospital opened, we added calls to Union West just so we could kind of track to see what we were getting, how often we were getting called to the hospital. And we just do a little narrative of anything special that happened. The lieutenants send me, they call it a significant incident, it's just something that stood out that they wanted to make sure made it in the monthly report. So I just thought, if you did not know, this is on the Police Department website and it tracks the entire year. It's a kind of a rather long spreadsheet, but you can scroll through and see the percent increase or decrease for just things that happen around town. But Alex had talked to me about wanting to talk about some crime stats. I'm gonna give kind of a higher level view, then if you have any questions, I'll take your questions. But really, when we're talking about crime, we're looking at, the UCR defines crimes as part one crimes and part two crimes. And some of this I talked about at the retreat, so you might remember. Part one crimes are serious crimes, crimes against persons. Part two crimes, still crimes against people, but less, I should say, less serious, like simple assaults versus aggravated assault. DWI's, weapons offenses, some liquor law violations are part twos. So we say those are, I don't want to say less serious, but they're not violent crimes. So just a real quick, yes, sir?
Can you go back?
Yeah.
Under less serious and nonviolent, what is weapons offenses?
So carrying a concealed weapon without a concealed carry permit would be a weapons.
What is using a gun in a robbery?
That's an armed robbery, which is a part one, robberies.
So is there a differentiation under part one between robbery and usage of a gun?
Robbery is a robbery. It's a, it's an aggravating factor if you're using a weapon. So if I take something by force, that's a robbery. If I use a weapon to take something by force, it's an aggravating factor.
So is armed robbery a category anymore?
It falls under the robbery and when you're looking.
A separate category where these are gun cases and these are whatever.
Well, they fall under the robbery statute as just an aggravating factor to like the sentencing of a robbery. So just a five-year look at our part one versus our part two crimes. If you see from 18 to 22, 2020 crimes went down. Part ones and twos went down. Obviously, everybody was locked in their house or working from home. 21, as we expected, crimes occurred when people started coming back out and things started opening back up. But really, if we look at these and you see our part twos are much higher than our part ones. We can say those really stay within just a, not even 100 difference over the course of those five years. So our crime rate has stayed pretty steady, similar to our call for service. It's stayed pretty similar over the last five years as we've gone through all these changes that have occurred in our society and our community. This is a 2022 snapshot of cases that have been assigned to detectives. I guess for me, the big takeaway, one of the things I've always talked about here in Stallings is one of the things we deal with the most are property crimes. Breaking into cars, some storage buildings, occasionally houses. So theft, property crimes. But you see, our biggest one that was assigned to detectives were frauds and basically credit card fraud, internet frauds. You can see that number blows everything else out of the water on that, on that chart. And you can see those, and this is kind of a big chart to look at, but you see larceny of motor vehicles, larceny of firearms, felony larceny. And then we have the breaking and entering of vehicles and breaking and entering of structures.
Find larceny for me, please.
Theft.
So I was gonna say, that would be an unlocked car. You reach in and steal stuff, that's larceny.
A misdemeanor, that's a misdemeanor, breaking and entering. So the theft there, the larceny after the fact is the larceny. So just entering the car is a crime, stealing something is another crime.
Even if it's unlocked?
Even if it's unlocked. Oh, sorry.
What's the difference between that breaking and entering vehicles toward the bottom?
Well, larceny of motor vehicle is stealing the car.
Oh, the car?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, what if you reach in and steal stuff?
Breaking and entering of the motor.
It's unlocked.
It's still breaking and entering. You didn't have the right, the authority to enter into the car.
I thought there was a difference.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
And then here, this is a first quarter, so 2020 to '23, this is just January through March. I thought it would be helpful to see those numbers. As you can see, those numbers are fairly consistent. Domestics staying in the mid to high 40s to high 50s. I'm gonna skip over robbery and we'll go back to that one. Our overdose calls have stayed fairly consistent within a couple. Our property crimes, again, you can see is the big number. 30, 54, 35, 32, just various drug activity calls, fairly low. And then motor vehicle theft, 21 was a big year. But interestingly enough, all 11 of those vehicle thefts occurred within the first three months of the year. And that was our total for the year. But I'm gonna go back to robbery. Obviously, I know that's the, what people are wanting to talk about. So we had one in 21, we had one in 22, we've had three this year and three just here in the first three months of the year. You know, that's one of the, as a police officer for 27 years, we had 24-hour businesses that are close to the periphery of town. Those were the ones we always had to worry about because it's a quick in, a quick out. The bad guy can come in, you know, late at night, not be seen, do his, you know, commit his crime. And then particularly in Stallings, you can jump on 485 or be on 74 or back in Monroe before you know what's happened. Even before the police even get called, they're already on 485, ready to go. So yeah, that is a concerning number that we've had three in three months compared to previous years. So I'm not gonna go too far, but I'm gonna let you guys ask questions of me, so.
Well, of those three, I mean, I think for me, one of the other questions would be like, is that, I guess robbery of a business that's closed at 2:00 AM in the morning is different than somebody walking in and holding up cashier or something like that?
And that's a, that's a breaking and entering. I mean, that's like a burglary type call. So, you know, a robbery is a, really is a crime against a person because there's a clerk there, they're being threatened. You know, some sort of force is being used to steal.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
And, and to be, so we've had, not Stallings, but in this area, we've had five armed robberies in this same timeframe. And without getting in too deep of the investigative process, we've been able to connect the other two in the county to ours here in town. So the investigators are diligently working on these cases and we're hopeful to come to resolution soon.
I'm just curious, is that the same with the 11 that happened in 2021? Was that a organized group?
Some motor vehicle thefts?
Yeah.
You know, one of the things that really struck me as odd when I came from Alamance County here is the number of cars getting stolen. That number was significantly higher down here than is up there. And I think, I'm gonna attribute it just because there's so many people in this area that it's easy to come through. And I think sometimes people think, well, it's a small town, I can go do whatever I want. That's why we're so big and one of the. One of the things we talk about on this monthly report is preventative patrols. Those are officers are in the neighborhoods logging in the computer that they've driven through this neighborhood. So I used this story, years ago, in my old department, I was part of the citizen satisfaction survey. And all of us cops are sitting there like, oh, man, the community's gonna be worried about drugs, gangs, murders. And so our survey goes out, we get this response and we're analyzing the data. And we were shocked because the citizens, the community, was most worried about neighborhood speeding. And we were like, what? That's what, I mean, it's the perception, it's what's happening in your neighborhood. A car comes speeding down your street, you don't want that, kids are running around. So, you know, that's why we really put an emphasis on our officers being in the neighborhood, being visible. Visibility is the first key to preventing crime. So that's the preventative patrols, that's one of the things we really focus on, is officer visibility. So what other questions can I answer for you guys?
I saw that Luna is working the night shift.
Yes.
Not seven days a week?
No, she, so they work, that K-9 team works, they work the modified Dupont. They work three days one week, two days the next, or I'm sorry, four and three. So, yeah, so, but she's permanently assigned to the night shift. And then Lily's assigned to the days. And he, actually Luna got her, that was her first track opportunity, not that we want that, but that was her first track opportunity on this armed robbery we had at 7-Eleven.
Last night?
Last night, yes, sir.
Oh, so we had, we had something last night.
You have 7-Eleven on?
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, that's the third one on there, so.
7-Eleven? Right off 45 at Ottawa.
We had Gate, Harris Teeter and 7-Eleven.
7-Eleven. It was at 2:40 this morning.
Right off 45 and get back on.
45's been there for a long time. Why would the uptick be happening now?
I think we're seeing an uptick in crime in general. And I don't want to say, you know, Stallings has a low crime rate. And like I tell the officers when we interview candidates, I say, we don't want to take that low crime rate for granted. So we have to continually be out there. So, you know, it's, I think, and this is just conjecture, as communities start to grow outward from the city, we're gonna start seeing people come in. Like I think I've said before, a lot of our crime is pass-through crime. When we make arrests and clear cases, it's not people that live in Stallings. It's people that are driving through. If you recall, we had the house that got shot into down the street. He was from South Carolina. He just was driving from Monroe back to Rock Hill.
I was at a presentation by our district attorney a week or so ago about his hot button and serious concerns drugs, that people get hooked on opioids and causes all kinds of other problems, but a big one is theft.
Absolutely.
They need to feed their habits, so they're, are you seeing that yet directly or not?
Interestingly, we haven't really been able to tie, I would assume, some of our car break-ins. And I would say, I think we looked at this two years ago. I think it was about 90% of our cars that were broken into were unlocked vehicles. So we kind of did an informational campaign to get out there. And you can see, most of you, I should probably have signs in front of your neighborhoods that say lock, hide, take. You know, that simple act of locking your car can probably reduce car break-ins by 90%. But yeah, I mean, historically, in my 27 years, yeah, people are desperate. They're gonna either steal and back in the day, they would empty envelope deposit into an ATM. You don't, they don't do envelope deposits anymore, but then they would make a withdrawal right away to go buy drugs. And as the, again, as the area grows, people are gonna continue to try to reach out to figure out, oh, is this a good place to go? And we want it to be known, Stallings is a friendly community, but it is not a place that you want to come and commit crime.
Alrighty, any other questions for Chief?
Two. The number of drug investigations, is that zero, zero, one and zero?
So that is, that's an odd kind of metric there. That is not patrol, making a drug case or stopping a car that's got marijuana or some other drug. That is our detectives specifically working a drug case. So we're not including the drug cases that our TFO at the airport works because that wouldn't, that'd really just kind of be padding the stats. That's if someone gets information, passes it on to the detective, the detective goes and works that particular drug case. And to be honest, those level cases getting pushed up to the investigators just haven't been happening. Most of it is stuff the officers find on a traffic stop and issue a citation, take it and log it into evidence.
So this would be like executing a search warrant on a house that you think has.
Like long-term surveillance, long-term drug operations, yeah.
I just, it's interesting, I just thought it was low, but.
Very low, yeah.
The other one going to the thefts, do you know how many of our cases have involved theft of a gun?
So I don't have an exact number, but I can think off the top of my head. We've had just a few out of residential buildings or structures. But I was very surprised when I first got here was the number of guns getting stolen out of unlocked cars. So we had this intentional conversation about how do we inform the community, hey, you know, everybody, you know, you want to have a gun, great, but you've got to secure it. And, and the statute, you know, of not securing a firearm for a minor is if your house is broken into, your car's broken into, there's less liability on you for that. But yeah, I was surprised because we were getting, when I first got here, so three years ago, I haven't seen it as much this year, but I don't have the exact numbers. But we were getting a lot of guns stolen out of unlocked cars, which was just kind of blew my mind.
Yeah, anecdotally, someone broke into my car in Charlotte. They were clearly looking for a gun because they didn't take anything.
Exactly, exactly.
Didn't even take the title. No joke, I foolishly had the title on the car. Didn't take it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, one of, we're asking all these questions because obviously, you know, you do the policing. It's our role to make sure you got tools you need to do the policing. So my only question, it's kind of an open-ended question, is, you know, if you need something from us. Obviously, with our questions and answers, we don't know the statistics. We don't know what works and what doesn't work. And we may present something to you that's foolish, you know what I'm saying? Just from being, you know, just don't know. So I mean, that's what I, I mean, for me, that's what I would be looking for is that, hey, there's something that you need, tool was, I mean, you'll have to let us know because we just don't know.
Absolutely. There are a couple of things that we're working on, but we're trying to work collectively with the community before I, we bring anything to Council or ask to spend any money. But we do have a few, without getting into a lot of detail, we have a few irons on the fire of things where we're trying to partner with different organizations in the community. And someone else had asked about the drugs and the trying to steal. It's interesting because we had an incident, when we had the death by distribution arrest a week or so ago, Assistant Chief Perry is actually meeting with a drug counselor and he's, he offers free services. So we're trying to see how we can incorporate his services into any of the folks we run into or deal with here in town that maybe have a drug habit but are trying to get clean. So there's always a social side to that, too.
Alright, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
By the way, that, my neighbor across the street, I just found out, that's the reason why I was late is because he's actually going to Coastal Carolina for law enforcement. So we were chatting.
Alright, you're up next again, Chief.
Yes, sir.
With the market adjustment consideration there.
Yeah, well, again, thank you. And this is the market adjustment, talking about recruitment and retention here in the Police Department. Gonna talk about some of the background. I'm gonna ask you for a need for an increase in salaries and then the funding sources for that. A lot of this might be repetitive. It's, some of the stuff's what I talked about at the retreat. But again, I'm gonna kind of touch it quickly and try to get through it. So as of the other day, the Police Department is coming up on having five officer vacancies. That means, that translates to mean we will have, 20% of our positions will not be staffed. When I talked at the retreat, it was four. And in the past week or two weeks, we had an officer put in his resignation. I'll talk about that in a little bit. And again, some of this is repetitive, but a survey, a national survey with departments of 50 or less showed that 9% of their positions are unstaffed or unfilled. So right now, we're pushing 20. And that is getting to be, that's a serious number, that's five positions. In our area, the average vacancy is 10. And you know, that's using, Monroe is down 13 officers, Pineville's down eight. I think Waxall told me when I talked to them, they're down five or six. Mint Hill's down eight. Matthews, you know, they did the big pay raise, they're still down. I talked to Chief Williams over there, their interim chief. And he said it's helped, they're getting some candidates in, so it's good, but it's just a time-consuming process. As I talked earlier, our calls continued, our calls for service remain steady. And if you remember that retreat, we hovered around 12,000 calls for service per year and that stayed about the same. Just fluctuating a few hundred up or down. Currently, what we're seeing is the demand for police officers outweighs the supply. The state of North Carolina consistently over the last five years has certified about 2,500 police officers statewide. And that does not seem to be enough to fill the void. That is with the Great Recession, people walking off the job, thinking my memo. We had one officer leave the profession since 2022, six have gone to other departments. That's a big chunk to lose from your Police Department. You know, historically, take the Assistant Chief and myself and Heath Cranford out of the mix. Our average years of service in the Police Department is less than six. That's, that's not a lot of experience for a police officer. But again, demand outweighs supply. You saw this in the infograph I gave you at the retreat. I'll just read it real quick, I don't want to bore you here. 78% of agencies are having difficulty recruiting. 65% of agencies reporting having too few candidates. 75% of agency reported it's more difficult than it was five years ago. 50% of agency reported having to change agency policies in order to gain applicants. And 25% of agencies reported having to reduce, eliminate certain services or units because of difficulty staffing. As much as I hate to say it, we fit in all five of those categories. At one, in one degree or another, we've had to do something like that or have struggled to get candidates. I'm not gonna read all these, but these are the, some of the recruitment retention strategies we've done. You know, you all approved the incentive plan, you approved the police cadet program. Police cadets, we're getting lots of applicants. Lateral transfer police officers, we're not getting any. And I'll touch on that here in a bit. But it's 40 weeks from the time we shake their hand to the time they are ready to hit the street on their own. That is a long time when you're down five police officers and you only have 25. So competition for qualified candidates is an all-time high. And I said this also at the retreat. We had our applications for lateral transfer officers open for about four months. I think we had a total of nine applicants and only two met the standard, the minimum standard for us to call in for interviews. We did a background on one and we were not able to move forward after the background investigation. Touching on the two officers, we lost one to Matthews with their new salary. And then we just, the one that just put his notice in is going to Mecklenburg County. Again, I'll say Matthews pay starting 51.7, Mecklenburg County starting at 53. So they'd made that decision to make that move. So what I'm asking for, and this is in consultation with the manager, finance and HR, is to approve an immediate $5,000 year increase for all police officers and to increase each police officer pay grade by $5,000. Karen brought up a really good point, I didn't think of this, when she was looking at. Karen brought up a really good point, I didn't think of this, when she was looking at pay scales, she saw even with that $5,000 increase, Matthews is still at the midpoint, 6% higher than our midpoint, and then almost 8% at the max rate for patrol officer. And that number just grows as you move up the ranks. But costs and funding, cost to implement this for the remainder of the fiscal year is just a little under $40,000. Cost to increase this funding for next year would be $157,000, that's salary, or that's pay and benefits. But that's not figuring any salary increases, that's on today's salary. Currently, due to our staffing issues, we have about $300,000 in lap salaries. So I would ask is if, for y'all to approve that $5,000 a year increase. And I'm sure there's some question or two, so more than happy to field your questions.
All right. Well, the ones I asked Alex when he called me today is, how do we compare with Monroe and Union County sheriffs?
So Monroe, I know that even our current salary is about $7,000 higher than theirs. And for some reason, officers from Monroe aren't leaving. They are leaving, but it seems just my conversations with Chief Gilliard has been, they're leaving police work altogether. And that I, I can't understa, I don't, I don't know, and I've, I don't really know a lot of officers there in Monroe that I'd be able to ask. It could be due to size, you know, you work in a certain sized department, you think, oh, I wouldn't go to a smaller department. You know, it's just, it is what you know. The sheriff's office, kind of a different beast because they're so big and they have so many different units and divisions. You know, we have lost a few officers, I think three officers to the sheriff's office, just because it's got a lot more opportunity. The sheriff's office is very fortunate because they've kind of got their bullpen in the detention center. They hire detention officers, if they're good quality detention officers, they send them to BLET so they can work and go to BLET. And then when they have road spots come open, they pull them out of the detention center, put them on the road. When I was working on this at the beginning, I was talking to all the chiefs about their vacancies, and I talked to someone at the sheriff's office, and they said, really, technically, they're down zero deputies on the road because they've got that, those folks to pull from, from the detention center. Again, you know, I think, right, we're right in the middle of the road. One of the things I think I've said, another, when we were talking about the incentives, is we start out pretty good at the, out of the gate. And then a lot of the other departments have implemented career progression plans, and we kind of lose it, we kind of lose our salary strength a few years into it because we don't have a career progression plan.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else?
Could you, I'll leave you.
After you.
When you say career progression plan, like, what is it, I mean, is it, what is it?
Sure. So when I got here, Alex had shared with me the, the pay study, I think it was done in 2019. And one of the recommendations was implementing a career progression plan for a police department. So really, that is, as officers gain time in the police department, they hit certain levels of training, certain levels of experience, they have the opportunity to move up a grade. So all kind of a lateral move, so you have like, police officer, police officer one, police officer two, master police officer, corporal one, corporal two. So as they, as they expand their training horizon, they have the ability to get a rise in pay. And then you, you know, you can do it as sergeant one, sergeant two, lieutenant one, lieutenant two, some places do it a lot different. We had started working on a career progression plan, and just with some of the budgetary issues, we decided not to bring it forward. So we've, it's, we've kind of got it sitting in our back pocket for a later day.
Brad? Yeah, could you just back up and go through those numbers again? And the memo, I didn't quite line those, I didn't see it broken up that way. So I saw the memo was $125,000 cost plus 32.127. So that's for next year?
That would be next year, and I'll be completely honest with you, as I was sitting through this today, I realized, well, I don't know, I, I missed it, there's not $157,000 cost this year because we only have three months left in the fiscal year. So I called Alex and I said, whoa, hey, I think I missed this year. So Jamie and I talked about it, Alex and I talked about it, so I had to update the PowerPoint, couldn't update the memo.
Okay. So, but, but the point is, if we fix it this year, we carry forward an additional base of X.
Sir.
As a percentage, do you know what the 5,000 is for a, a starting officer?
Yeah, so it's 40, let's say 47, just...
47 is our starting?
Yeah, at, when you hit the five, the six-month probationary period, you complete that, you get a 5% pay raise, so you're sitting at 47 approximately.
After how much time?
Six months.
Okay. I mean, I think we can all, I, I can, I can't speak right, I agree that these are very low salaries for such important positions, and I don't doubt that. I, I get concerned, though, about the out-of-budget cycle discussion and the urgency of it. So how would you describe the urgency of it?
So, five officers when you have 25 is significant. Significant that we had to make some staffing shifts that are really kind of out of the ordinary, so we can make sure we have the right coverage on the street. The term I was always used is the patrol is the backbone, and we've got to make sure the backbone is strong and stable. Quite honestly, in 27 years, this is the worst I've seen it. And I don't, he's, regard to recruiting, regard to competition. I mean, I'll be honest, you know, years ago, we'd have 100 people show up to take our civil service exam. And it's come, you know, this really has started, I would say about 2015-ish, 2014. Well, be honest, this all kicked off with Ferguson, Missouri. If you remember that incident down there, it's, it's been a, a slow fade since then.
Well, and I, I think it's that, the, the, the conditions and the, the press, if you will.
Yes, sir.
It's also another dynamic we don't really talk about, which is those are really low salaries for anybody starting. The, the cost of things being what they are, the alternatives to earn money passively, or, I mean, heck, you could open up a, a Pinterest site selling something and make good money these, I mean, the, the, the way you can make money is exponentially more than it was five years ago, so. I don't know what to do, this is, this is concerning. I'd rather have it in a budget discussion, but you're telling us, I think that, without telling us, you're saying that, that a wait of six months before the new budget, or three months, is critical to you to retain existing staff.
I'll be completely honest, if we lose one or two more, we're, we're in dire straits. I mean, that, that, I'm not one to come here and say the sky is falling, that is not me. But we are getting to a very critical point. And we're all trying to figure out what is the, what's the fix, what's the, the magic elixir. Recently read an article from the, the president of the IACP. He was at a conference in New Zealand, and he, the, the article was all about, this is not an American issue or a United States issue. New Zealand, Australia having the same troubles trying to get police officers. I don't know if it's a generational trend. But again, you know, we're getting some very good candidates that are cadets or recruits, but 40 weeks doesn't solve our, our issue today. You know, maybe, I think we get some good folks that are loyal, they see that, hey, Stallings took the chance on them, and they're going to stay here and not drift off in three or four years. I mean, I'm looking for, you know, maybe I'm pie in the sky, I'm looking for 30-year people that are going to be here, and I retire, and, and they move up the ranks, and they become the chief, and you all know them and see them. That's what I'm looking for, and maybe that's, like I said, maybe that's pie in the sky, but that's what I would like to see.
One more.
All right, Stephen?
You said the, 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 the progression, career progression is something in our back pocket. I mean, you're, you're, you also said that, I mean, this is the worst you've seen it. Is it time to move it to the front pocket?
To be very honest, the career progression, we created an ad hoc committee, they got together, they kind of formulate, it's about 80% done. The manager and I talked, and this is probably a, the career progression plan is probably a better piece to implement during a pay study, when there's a overall change versus us coming in and saying, here's this, we, we need, you know, we need a lot.
Okay, well, I, I guess what I'm hearing here tonight, though, is that we're kind of at a bad situation. It seems like, you know, maybe that's, it's, it's time to, to do some of that. That would just be my, my thoughts.
Any other questions for Chief? Or comments to the council? You know, I'll give you, you know, Alex and I talked about this, you know, I'm with Brad, I'm concerned, you know, doing something in the third, fourth quarter of the budget cycle. In my 18 years on the council, this is the tightest budget revenue versus expenses that we've ever had coming up this year. And so to spend this kind of money in the fourth quarter, it has me concerned. Obviously, our employees, whether they're police officers or whoever, are our biggest asset, and we want to keep them. But to me, to do it in the fourth quarter is about a clearer picture of what next fiscal year looks like, it's a little bit risky.
I guess what I would say to that, and I agree, I agree, Sam, this is hard, is that the question of budget impact for the next several years, that, that comes up in our budget season. Meaning that if there's savings in lap salaries, I mean, you could essentially grant this request tonight and carry that sentiment into the, the spring budget discussions about how do you prepare for the upcoming years, knowing we've just done this at a base level. So I'm not saying I, I'm against it, I'm just saying it's concerning. But I acknowledge how low those starting salaries seems to be for such an important job in our town, so. You know what I mean?
Yeah, tough decision, no doubt.
Well, I'm going to support it, I'll go ahead, I, I'm going to support it, but with that caveat, is we have to carry that into the, into the budget discussions. And that, I don't know what that means, but I'd look for staff to kind of help me understand what that means. We've got a bunch of other staff that do really important work, too. And I know we have an inflation-adjusted salary pay policy. I don't even know what that number is this year, so we, we've got some work to do. So for me, I, I, I think I'm convinced that we can do this tonight, but I, I, I would vote for this tonight. I'm not so sure how, how we fix the bigger problem.
That was a concern of mine, too, and Alex and I have talked about that, like, what to do for the future to sustain. Like, what would we cut in order to?
I, oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm jumping right in there. This is a concern. But it's something we've kind of seen happening for the last several months, if not longer. The inflationary impact on, on all of our goods and services. But now that we've got this, the, the, the police force countrywide, nationwide, or worldwide also, but us in particular, we got to figure out how we're going to provide one of the two major services. We just took care of the garbage, that's one of our stalling services that we provide, and police is the other one. And if this was to, as Chief said, if we go one or two more, we're in a dire, dire straits. We're in dire now, but dire, dire, worse straits should we have one or two more. I'm in favor of it, but it is a concern. I don't know how we're going to adjust for this going forward, but, but we'll have to, and it'll have some big discussions. But yeah, we need to, in my opinion, pass this, increase and hope that it stems the tide of officers leaving our department.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll just, I'm in favor of it, I think the robberies drive it home, right? We can't have our businesses out there. Yeah. Feeling like they're not protected, so.
All right, well, what's the pleasure of the board, then?
Make a motion that we approve the, an immediate $5,000 a year increase for all police officers, and increase each police officer pay grade by $5,000.
I'll second it.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Shoal, second by Mr. Ayers, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does have it, all right, thank you, Chief.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
I was just going to give David a hard time, he's, he's done a ride-along that practically makes him one, right?
It is, it is.
Two, we've got two right here.
Got a ride-along. Nothing good happened, but...
Oh, I had good stuff. I'm going to do it again.
All right, citizen survey, now Aaron's out six, so Alex, did you want to talk about?
Yeah, I'm happy to present that, yes, sir.
I did mine at 12, 4:00 AM shift. Oh. That happened fun.
Oh, man.
You want some?
Big projects.
Good evening, everybody, very quickly, I, I don't want to take too much time because I think everybody's familiar with the issue. But it was probably, I think, a couple councils ago, Mayor, the board at the time wanted to do kind of a citizen survey, and it's been kind of carried over. And we're at a point where we need to kind of decide and get some direction whether that's something we want to do. Obviously, formally polling the citizens typically requires a willingness of the board to consider and maybe act on some of what you hear. Otherwise, you don't have to, but you can risk a negative public perception. And nothing quite irritates, it makes people angry more than feeling like they're not listened to, right? So wanted to kind of follow up with the board and give you all several options. I'd be happy to go through the timeline if that's helpful, but I think everybody's familiar with it. The first would be to continue to give feedback to staff on the proposed survey. We can kind of send that out, we can reach back out to Dr. Cooper, who was with Western Carolina University and was going to do the study for us, get an updated cost on it, that kind of thing. So that's option number one. The second option would be to pause survey efforts until the specific topics to poll are determined later in the fiscal year. Right, maybe it's something we, maybe we want to do a few months from now, but we want to kind of get a better frame of what we might want to ask. And then the third option is just to not to do the survey and just revisit when the board deems it appropriate, or something such as if there's a big issue that we want to get feedback on from the public.
So, real quick, my thought is, is that if, you know, if you do a survey, you would want to have it in your hand and kind of tabulated by, what, the next retreat?
That'd be ideal, yes, because that's really the planning, otherwise you're waiting a good bit of time, right? Because if, if you don't have it in time for the annual retreat, then the priorities are set for the fiscal year, then you're another year behind. And the survey data is probably somewhat outdated at that point, right?
Okay. And so, I guess that's, probably don't know, but kind of some timings there, because, I mean, if we, if we had, say, the survey ready by June, would it take six months to, to get out to the people and get that back and looked at, how long did we say? My brain doesn't work that well, so I'm not sure, remember how long that was going to take.
I'd say from start to finish, six months, that's probably a pretty good guesstimate. You know, we'd want to go back to Dr. Cooper, because some of it is probably not just the work, but it's aligning the survey work with his semester class and his graduate students, so we need to line those timelines up.
So, I mean, just looking at what we, I mean, you probably want to have it so that the fall semester could take it on.
Yeah, it's probably a good guess. Yes, sir.
In order for it to line up with our next year's retreats.
And so remind me, are they doing it free or is there a cost?
Previously, we had agreed to a rate. Dr. Cooper had a, I believe, a death in his family and couldn't do it, and he offered to do it for us for free. There might be some minimal cost. Now, that was a number of months ago, that might have changed, circumstances might have changed. So if that's something the board wants us to pursue, then we'd want to go back and get an updated proposal from Dr. Cooper.
Any other questions for Alex? Comments? I'm for, I told Alex I'm all for eliminating it, and if something big comes up, we want to take a...
Second.
Well, I can't make a motion, but somebody else, you make the motion.
What he said.
Well, I thought some questions were good, but I felt like a lot of the questions were things that we don't really have control over. were things that we don't really have control over, you know, and so I feel like it gives all the residents like a false idea of what we can and can't control.
Yeah, because the last.
And so when they're not satisfied with you, it's really the things that you can't, you couldn't do anything about in the first place. So some of the questions, I felt like we're almost setting you up for failure.
Yeah, because the last survey we did was, to me, was way too broad. I mean, it was asking everything. I'd rather focus it in on trash, you know, police, parking wreck, just focusing on something that we think there's a need for, get some input. And we all know how apathetic our community is when we can't get people on, sort of on the citizen board, so.
I'll make a motion that we eliminate the survey from the current fiscal year and revisit if and when citizen feedback on specific topics is warranted.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Say that the citizens can always, if they're listening to this, you can always reach out to us with any feedback.
All right, was that unanimous?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that was unanimous. All right. Hey, real quick, that's the end of our agenda, hotel occupancy tax. Alex and I.
We got a little more thing about it.
Oh, that's right.
We added that one thing.
Yeah, that's right, four A, go ahead. Senate Bill four-three-seventeen. David, and then Alex?
I don't know if you all are aware of this bill. Senate, Senate Bill three-seventeen, and the quote, the title is "Addressing the Workforce Housing Crisis." The NCLM, this is a copy of the NCLM letter we all got today. It goes into some of the details on it, hopefully you've had a chance to read it, but it basically doesn't do much of what it says it's gonna do. The title sounds great, but it doesn't accomplish that, and it takes away a large amount of our local ability to zone, to make our town the way we want it, and other towns, not just us. So I've spoken with Todd Johnson, Senator Todd Johnson, our guy for Union County. Spoke to him today on the phone. Wyatt spoke to him probably Friday. Probably got the same answer I did, but Todd was, you'll read this one sentence here, nearly two thirds of the state senate signed up as a primary sponsor or co-sponsor, including Todd Johnson. He said, it was, sorry, Todd, if you're watching, he said it was a mistake. Things happened. He was, he signed on before he had fully read it. He said four hours later, after he had had a chance to really fully read it, he pulled his name and as our several other of his senate members, senators, fellow senators. It's not good, and he's gonna do all he can. He says, I'm a firm, hard no. This is not good for municipalities, not good for Union County or any of us around in Union County or across the state, so. For what I was hoping to get out of us tonight is to direct staff to do, draft a resolution we can bring back in two weeks and, and pass that and send it off to the state senate and anybody else that needs to know our feelings about this bill.
Let everybody know, this was also a topic at Wuma this past week, and it was universally thought to be a bad idea there also. It's that, all of the towns that we work with, with Wuma, obviously they're community-building towns, so they were really concerned that the state was gonna allow construction wherever they wanted to, with no, with very little restrictions, so.
All right, any other comments on Senate Bill three-seventeen?
I saw somewhere that feedback was requested by the thirtieth of March by NCLM. Is that, is David's schedule work with any? Does that work from a perspective of what we're trying to do?
Well, you heard from the league today, didn't you?
I can add some additional perspective of that. I know you sent you several things, and I would, it's been confusing, so. Several timetables, one, we asked for some feedback from the league. I wanted to see if there was like, you know, a pamphlet with bullet points that they would have, because we want to, I would recommend, you know, speaking the same things they're speaking. Doesn't sound that the league is there yet, although they are hearing a lot of concerns. Union County is very actively involved, and their managerial group is gonna employ their lobbyist to go and lobby on behalf of Union County, and they've asked for any feedback from the other local government managers within Union County. And so the date that they've asked to give us that feedback is the thirtieth. So what I might suggest we do there is just let them know, we've talked about it, the board opposes this. Initially, the conversation was, what I was told is, it was a situation where there was such broad support across the aisle for this initially, that it didn't seem like a bill that could be eliminated a hundred percent. It would be something where you'd have to make suggestions, if that makes sense. However, based on Mayor Protim Shoal's conversation with Senator Johnson, it sounds like that might not be the case anymore, especially because you saw in that league report, two thirds of the entire senate had put on as sponsors. However, I'm guessing they're reading it, they're getting feedback from their constituents, and I counted today, there were thirty-three. So they're dropping like, dropping like flies now.
Thirty-three what?
Sponsors, either primary or secondary sponsors on the bill. Before, there were two thirds of the entire senate. So I do think there's a greater likelihood that we can stop it. I would suggest the greatest thing when it comes to lobbying is, the resolution's good, it's important, something we absolutely should do. But really having, if we have face-to-face relationships, those folks, calling them and reaching out and kind of using those relationships to communicate our concerns. Which I know the mayor and the mayor pro tem have been doing that, so thank you, gentlemen.
I had texted Todd first, before I actually got him on the phone, but I said, I'd like your perspective on Senate three-seventeen, and he said, I'm gonna quote this, so if there's a bad word in it, it's his, not mine. Dead in my book, folks are mad as hell, and rightfully so. I am a hard no on it, and I know of a number of my colleagues that are hard no. We are gonna fight it, and I think we can stop it. So that's his perspective on the bill that he initially co-sponsored. A number of them are pulling off.
Do we need a resolution, or can we make a motion tonight that stipulates something that you could just send to the county? I don't know that we.
State.
County is part of their lobbying package.
Well, since it's due March thirty, that would be where you go.
For that one, yes, but Todd also said that, he was also talking to one of his fellow senators, and they were talking about this bill, and he said, the other guy said, I haven't heard anything from my local constituencies, so. And Todd has heard from all of us, practically, probably all of us at least. So he said, the more you guys, I mean, municipal, municipal folks, write, call, and do resolutions, the better. You can't just assume that it's gonna get done. This is one of the more egregious bills this year, so we don't want this at all. We need to make our voices heard, and we need to encourage our friends in other municipalities, either in Union County or across the state, to also participate vocally, getting it one way or the other, getting word to their local contingencies.
I'm okay with the resolution. What would you like to do tonight, though?
I would like to direct staff, at the very least, to direct staff to do a resolution for us for two weeks from now, and, what do you suggest in the, for the and for this, the county?
No, I don't know, do we need to do anything for the county? You can just tell them that.
I wouldn't know, we've talked.
Is there a consensus that this is sort of an, I would just call it an overreach. It doesn't really address the real issue. It undermines local authority on zoning regulations and place making for our community. And by example, there are two, you know, I think you mentioned a couple sites that would, that would be detrimental to our town's development if allowed to develop under these rules. Those are the kind of things I think you could just pass on to the county. If you need to write something, I'll be happy to help you write it, but.
I think I can take care of it.
Yeah, we had three developers at Wuma, and all three of them basically said that this sounds good, but all it would do is turn them into flipper houses, because.
You just gotta hold it a year, then you're done, right?
Yeah.
You flip it, and.
Yeah.
That's another.
Yeah, Pappas even said when they put a ten-year hold where he's been from before, it still didn't work. All they did is held it for ten years and flipped it.
Yeah, it sounds like, I don't, yeah, yeah, okay. But thanks for bringing it up, it's important.
So are we gonna?
I, yeah, I'll make a motion to, I'll second your motion, direct staff to, I want you to make a motion, since you, I want you to do it, since you're.
I did make the motion.
Did you?
It just stopped us, and the county stuff, the A or N.
Communicate to the county our reasons for displeasure.
That's my motion, second.
All right, motion by Shoal, second by Richardson.
One question on the motion before, I think, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that the county manager, his name, Brian, I know, but that's like a band or something, isn't it? So, that, I, sorry, it just didn't roll off. Huh? It's the Dave Matthews Band, okay, okay.
It's his brother.
Okay, his brother. But didn't he want us to do a resolution and also send that to them? Okay, but that's, okay.
So what I'll do is, I'm hearing two things, and correct me if I'm wrong here. The first, the staff will go back and draft a resolution opposing this bill. We'll bring it back at the next regular council meeting, so the board can approve it, and then we can send it to appropriate channels. The second thing is for staff to communicate to the county staff, our opposition, the general reasons we've heard tonight, so that they can go and have that feedback to give to their lobbyists. Their lobbyists can go and lobby.
And I guess that's what I was wanting, a little bit of clarification on, is those two scenarios with the county. Okay, thanks.
Not as part of that motion, I wanted to distract us, but at the bottom of that NCLM letter, government, government affairs staffers want to know all the comments and feedback above the, right above your signature line here. Just do that as well.
Sounds good.
All right. When this bill be vote, when it's gonna be voted?
It's the early, middle stages of it.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not missing.
It hadn't gone to the House yet, so.
But it hadn't gotten any of the readings either, but we're early, but early's better than late.
Yeah, no, a guy killed before has momentum.
All right, we got a motion and a second, and Mary, you can listen to the minutes and.
Figure what that was.
Figure out what that was, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Well, the other thing is, Senator Newton is one of the sponsors, you know, he's from Catawba County.
It's Cabarrus County, isn't it?
Cabarrus.
Yeah, Cabarrus, Concord, yeah, he used to be our senator, but I don't know where Moffett and Low are from. I would have sworn, I would have bet my bottom dollar, both, all of them were from Durham County or something like that, but. But not, okay, hotel occupancy tax, I don't know if I gave y'all an update or sent an email out, but Alex and I drove up there two and a half hours, we, I spoke for twenty seconds, we got back in the car, it's not by Lexington barbecue, had barbecue and came home. So we were there twenty.
It was worth the trip.
We were there twenty seconds to tell them we support the occupancy tax, and so. So now it's in the senate, didn't it go, yeah, it went to the, the house approved it, and so now it's in the senate, and so the, the house committee chairman thinks he can get it through the senate, so we'll see. So that'll help us out, was probably. I don't know how far, oh, we have to have a referendum, I think y'all read that, in November, so.
And it has to be spent, Mayor, on what, tourism?
Tourism, but it just frees up other money.
Right, right, so parking wreck is.
Parking wreck, yeah.
Little tourism, okay.
Stallings Fest.
Stallings Fest, got it.
Like that, so.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll get about, you know, my projection was about sixty thousand dollars. You know, those are two hotels right now, so. But it's not Stallings money, it's out-of-state money, or out of, out of our town. All right, any other comments? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
First by Mr. Ayers.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Grooms, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. All righty, thank y'all.